... flag in the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terry Walters was excused because he didn't work out of town.
Commissioner Carroll?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Whittington?
Here.
Commissioner Burglum?
Yep.
Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda is submitted.
Support? If we move in support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Do you know the cash balance?
Yes. General funds $2,611.92. Advance from 516 UTE $655,000. Advance from 239 GM $250,000. Total general fund cash add to the bills is $2,611.92.
Thank you, and that is after the bills.
After the bills.
Are there any public comments at this time? Yes.
Any questions?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Mary Doherty. I am here in regards to the honor roll. I am the daughter of Robert Elgrees, who is deceased. They got the new honor roll built back in the eighties according to flag etiquette. There's a light to be on, a flag, when it is displayed at darkness. That light I have called maintenance, I call the VA. I have called the mayor, the next phone call I make will be to News five. Because you're disrespecting my father, family members that I have on there, and all the veterans from this county that served for that flag that flies on the honor roll. And my dad walked streets, get donations. He didn't get donations from any VA organizations in this county. And out of respect for him and the fellow veterans of this county, that needs to be fixed. I have pictures taken at night. The streetlights are not to display the American flag. I got pictures in daylight in the dark, if you appear to see them on my camera. The light is not shown, and that is totally unethical according to United States flag etiquette.
I'm sorry that there's been an issue with that, that's the first thing brought to my attention.
Well, I have, like I said, I call VA. I call the mayor, he wouldn't do nothing. I call maintenance here at the courthouse. And anybody that has served in the military should know. And even if they haven't. And to disrespect my father, that took the time and the effort to go up and down the streets to get money and fundraisers, get him disrespected like this is totally unacceptable to me. So, my advice is to either get it fixed and fix it correctly, or I will contact News five.
Thank you, and then again, we're sorry, I didn't know, I didn't know this enough, so thanks for bringing that to our attention. Jen?
It's my understanding that project was completed last night by George Albert.
Well, ma'am, I got picture from last night at 10:30 quarter to 11:00, and it still wasn't working. If you want to see the pictures on the camera?
No, thank you, I'll take them. It's in the makings.
Well, in, in the, I'll go back up here. In the makings, because it's Memorial Day coming up? We're gonna fix it all for Memorial Day? No, this is an everyday thing, and in climate weather, the flag is not to be flown.
It can't be flown as long as it's all weathered.
As long as there's a off like, right.
And it's all weathered.
Okay, well then there still needs to be a light on at dark. Not just because Memorial Day is coming up and there's gonna be a whole bunch of people standing out there. And it's supposed to be 24 hours when the darkness is here. So I don't want to hear, oh, where it's in the making. No, this should've been done way back here, just like, you know, when, it's a whole nother thing, I'm not going there.
Tammy, thanks for bringing that to our attention, we'll look into it.
Well, it upsets me very much because my father has it, not anybody's here.
Thank you very much, we'll get it addressed. Are there any other public comments?
Good morning.
Here number one back. Lauren's not here yet. Let's take up the dog ordinance. There was two different resolutions that we want to have posted in the county record. There's the kennel license standards and then the dog ordinance. And before we actually move to at least post this, was there any other questions or any other board members on that?
Yeah, I've gone over this with several groups, there doesn't seem to be any objection. The clause that Doug Jacobson included in the comments, a amendment and or tailor, you know, tailored to the city of Eden, for example, had wanted something more specific on nuisance type animals, and it's available by their action, and I don't see any reason why we can't move forward with this without any problem.
And with my township, it's going to be an issue of the address. I would agree, what is public tolls for the kennel license and the end ordinance?
Support.
Any further questions? If they move the second amendment, say aye.
These are ordinances.
Think we need to do roll call just to post?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, just to post.
Okay. If they move second amendment, say aye. Close. Motion passes. Not just to post, so.
There'll be a public hearing number two.
We'll do a public hearing, the 28, 8:55, right? Five minutes? You want to do it, how much time do you guys want to allow?
That's probably sufficient, I don't think there's anything, and it's that controversial.
We can do it at 8:50, just in case. So, just make sure it's 8:50. Thank you. No more in here. Let's do committee reports then. Commissioner McCarroll?
Uh, let's review the other stuff. Other than the mud bog issue that's brought up, and I'm just gonna ask the other original Melton, they haven't spoken with Loudon Township yet to give their feedback, and I'll do that tonight.
Okay, and again, I know that the building inspector, who's obviously been involved with that, Doug Jacobson and one of their individuals representatives, Matt Monnet, who they talked about this time.
They don't seem to grant permission here, I asked him, but I understand there are some issues with the permits and things that weren't pulled for those meetings.
Yes, and I don't know the specifics, nor have we got any of the DEQ violations back, to my knowledge, although that could be, maybe we have them by now, I don't know, I'm not aware of any yet today. Commissioner Burglum?
Okay, of course, the Beaverton Township, Rock Township, the airport board, Michigan State Extension District, meaning Region 7B, meaning Central Michigan District Health, all of these are moving smoothly except Central Michigan District Health Department. We have still not opened for the director's position, which requires no medical training, but an MBA, and the summer range is 75 to 95. We have looking for a nurse practitioner. I've asked that we increase the, that wage because, I've checked with friends that I have in the medical business, and that $38 an hour is not attractive enough because they can earn 45 to 50 in other areas, so we're gonna have to reconsider. But that's cost us three RN positions where they had to lay them off.
Was it true with both your comments?
Okay, but because they had to lay off nurses because they didn't have the nurse practitioner. So, if anybody happened to know, just pass the word, I've been mentioning it, but we got to find someone for ARNAK lab and practice. Other than that, a lot of my people, the Air Force seems to be doing great, Mike does a good job. The building bids are out, so they'll be good for new mayor, so that's going. Other than that, on the dog ordinance, the feedback was positive, so.
You done? Yep. Lauren, are you ready?
Oh geez, yeah.
Mine is ready up here.
All right. Couple things, I always bring you our annual report, but I think that you have my budget and a few things in your packet. I apologize for not making the financial meeting, but there isn't a whole lot of changes other than our Title V positions that we typically get from area agency. We have not been successful, it's harder and harder to find a 55-year-old that qualifies that wants to work in the kitchen. That's hard work, very hard work, so unfortunately, we've had to put more than $10 towards it. The other challenge that we have right now is we're running out of volunteer drivers. Our 91-year-old out in Billings wants to retire and is driving, so we have to find someone to replace and lead her. I did find out at one of my meetings, I thought that we could not use CCT, but now I'm thinking that there's a way to do it, so I wanted to learn that we can kind of do something, being that we're all under one entity, we might be able to work something out, but CCT isn't max. So it's just been a real challenge, we've got a lot of services that need to be dealt with, so it is very challenging. The other thing that reflects in here is I keep reducing our goal set income because we are serving very low income, and we're just not getting the suggested donations. As you can see on the sheet that I gave you, our, the per meal cost for congregation went up just a little bit, it's at $1.40. Our suggested donation is $2.25, so we're not getting all of that. But for home delivered meals, our suggested donation is the same to an order for being $0.94 a meal. So, I'm very, my, I advocate quite a bit, especially with my staff, that it is a suggested donation. Those people, I can't judge who I think can donate and who can't, but typically, in my experience, those people who can donate do not. The people who struggle with finances are the ones that will cancel their meals because they can't afford it. And those are the people that we can't, we can't drop, we can't, so there's a real fine line on trying to get the suggested donation, so we make sure that everyone does get their meal and we're working through that, yes. Any questions that you had on the budget?
I don't have any questions, but where do we go from here with your funding for the meals that you're not collecting, what is recommended?
Actually, right now, the way that we have downsized has helped. We've reduced our expenses that way, we've also reduced our health insurance costs quite a bit. We didn't replace a nutrition director, we kind of dwarfed that, so that all helped in the big scope of things. Our meal cost, the raw food keeps going up, we don't pay rent for office space, so that, you know, being, like I say, I'm really under all the housing commission as a real asset because we get things that typically someone else would have to pay for. I think that right now, we're still looking really good because we don't have a lot of full-time people to add to this budget, just portions of them, and that, that was the plus right there. Other than that, I don't see a big issue right now, we're writing for more grants to help where kids, you know, we got the one vehicle, and that has helped in the Barret area because we're able to hire drivers. And someone asked me, well, doesn't that interfere with trying to get your volunteer drivers? And I don't see that as an issue because we're actually using our vehicle, not theirs. So they're not having a wear and tear on it, so it's still kind of equal. So my main objective is making sure that the seniors get that home delivered meals delivered for them.
I mean, they're, they're just reimbursed too mighty.
That's correct.
Yeah, but how are they getting them, they getting a federal rate?
They get the IRS rate, the housing commission board has felt very strongly to keep it up with the IRS rate because it is so hard to find the drivers, plus the conditions of the roads that many of them drive on are unbelievable. I mean, they only gotten two trackers out there that will go down.
What would your, what would your guess be, the average time that a driver puts in per day? And I know that would vary somewhat, but.
It can vary a lot. We have, actually, right now, we have a site manager in Beaverton that has to deliver the meals, and she's going, I think, from almost to the commie line to the west, almost all the way over to Billings. And her route is eight miles a day, so it's a good two and a half hours at least. So, and we try to break it out so that you're not, the volunteer drivers aren't, you know, that they don't have a big route, so that we can, you know, if you want to volunteer for one day, that'd be great, you know? It's like, we don't need someone necessarily to say, I have a commitment of five days a week. We're open to, you know, one day a week, one day, you know, whatever it is, we'll try to work around it, so. If you know of anybody or any organizations that you can spread the word, please, we do.
How many drivers do you need?
Actually, out in the Billings and Beaverton, PCC, we probably could use at least two, if not three.
And do you advertise for those at all?
All the time. I've actually also kind of connected our, I don't know if anyone knows Sam Eggnessy? He's our advisory person at Central Board on Area Agency, because I know that he's involved in the line of over at Beaverton. Somebody's got to come up to the plate and, and help us with the drivers, so.
If I were driven up Billings, probably even take on some more, Mr. Jukovic.
Do you have a map of areas where you deliver the meals to? Because I assume that if you're delivering to one place, you're delivering two meals a day, or just you take?
Yeah, we take the hot and then the cold. So, yeah, they've got, we actually got different warmers that actually make the meals warmer better and things like that. But we only have a window of time that we are allowed because the time done, I think it has to be three or four hours. If it's any longer than that, we have to stretch the meal because of the time, you know, you don't have to stay up to time.
You know one thing, and I've given, I'm only speaking for Billings because I have to be in the hall quite often, is it seems like the number of meals served there daily has dropped considerably. Is there a reason for that?
Um, yeah, my, they've all dropped off because mainly the people that were active back when we started, when Ellie Allen was there, are the people that were serving the home delivered meals. And we cannot, we keep trying to get the younger senior in. I don't necessarily promote that as much because with the funding getting less and less, we have to concentrate on home delivered meals people. Because our, our mission is to serve that vulnerable frail person in their own home. So that's really, we concentrate more on, more on that. With that said, we just were awarded a grant, actually, I shouldn't say awarded, you have to do that, say it's my board tonight, for $18,000 from the health department, central health department. They picked just a few COAs in their region, and we happen to be one of them, to do exercise education. And what I want to tag that to is the, probably the 55 to 60, and I can do that because it's not mileage dollars. And trying to get them healthy and trying to get them into our senior centers so that we can, number one, try and get them to volunteer, and number two, eventually come to our programs. So, yes, that's been an issue with all of the centers throughout the years. They've been really dropping off because they end up then either going into assisted living, into a high-rise, and then we end up getting them in that aspect. But the younger senior, I want to kind of use myself as an example, I'll be 60 this year and eligible for meals. I'm not ready for the meals, you know, it's like, so the younger senior, back when I first started, like I've said this story before, a frail senior was 70. And, you know, we were moving people in the high-rises at 62, and that's long gone. You know, we're moving them in at 85, and because they're still in their homes, keeping up their home. So, the data has all changed, you know, and we're trying to keep up with that and trying to keep the people in their homes as long as we can.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Lauren?
Every year I have to give out the narrative, just to kind of explains our programs, I know what we do. Nothing has really changed to our core programs.
How many seniors do you have that take advantage of the meals and are capable of dragging and stuff? Do you feel that at all?
Actually, we're, we have limit, not limited. We have certain assessment guidelines that we have to go by, and you might see someone out there that you think could come to the meal program, but there might be an issue that you don't see, that, and I know one in particular, that he can get around very well, but to put him in a setting with other seniors, he dribbles, if you will, and he's very self-conscious about that, so we allow the home delivered meals. So if there's someone else that's in the home that can prepare the meal, we don't allow home delivered meals. You know, we have to make sure that that person, that area only, won't available because that's another way to stretch. We're so over-serving on delivered meals. So, I don't really have a number for you because we try to limit that on basis of either their disability or there could be incontinence that, that might be an issue, that we have to keep them away from. But if at all possible, we try to get them to the center.
It just, it seems ironic that we're in a retirement community, and there's a lot of people that are retired, but yet don't have time to deliver meals.
No.
You know, I just, hard to believe. Okay, anything else from Lauren? And you just needed a resolution to affect your budget here?
Yes.
They moved the second amendment before we did the follow-up.
Commissioner Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Walters has been excused, Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yes.
Commissioner Burglum?
Yes.
I did want to ask, Mr. Carroll, have you heard anything about the, the home delivered meals in your area? They're getting serviced well?
As far as I know, I don't have Barret and Mortar in that area.
Oh, okay.
I haven't heard of them.
Have you heard anything about the meals? Because the two staff people that I had out there, if anybody wants an uplifting day, just talk to them because they, they were the leaders that they delivered.
Specifically in Barret, I haven't heard of that.
Tom will be there for meeting tonight.
Okay, I know that we're meeting there, because that was one of the reasons why we had to close Barret, so that we could rearrange and be able to serve the home delivered meals people. Well, thank you for your support, and if you have any questions or concerns, by all means, let me know. And I'm sure I'll be back in another capacity soon, thank you. Karen, I think you were happy.
One other thing, Lauren?
Yeah.
Maybe, I wonder if you could advertise with some of the churches, you know how they do a pamphlet? Have you done that, dude? Wow, okay. I don't have time to run meals around, but I wish I did.
I know, and like I said, if you get into an area, just mention it, you know, if somebody is interested, by all means, call our office and we'll talk to you, see if we can beat your schedule or whatever, but that's our main goal, is trying to get home delivered meals. The other program that we have a lot of money that is just tagged to that program is Respite Care, which basically is a program that we can go in and give the main caregiver a relief. Typically is for someone who maybe has Alzheimer's and needs to go to the doctors or just to get out. We have a lot of money that was tagged from the government, I love when they do that because then they're telling us where we can spend it. But, so if anyone has a need there, please let me know, and we can try to do something there. Other than that, like you said, our staff is amazing, they, they love the seniors, and I think they're getting quality care.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, Karen recommended we send something to the townships, we could do that, and they could, but I don't know. Trickful, as it tends to me, this struck me, is that it'd be a good place to try to advertise somewhere. Oh, let's see, Commissioner Whittington? Guess you're up now.
Oh, nope. I had a township meeting last night, I have a Barret township meeting, we've moved today and tonight. I'm in the finance and the budget. On the finance, I tell, I tell, what do I do? On the budget amendment, you know, some budgets. Neil Haverlocker, our financial coordinator, and I know in front of all of you, you have me familiar with this, go down, each and every one of them, if, I think we won't have a chance to look at those, so. I would, who, that would make the following, that means to the 2,000 general fund budget.
Is there support? And I'll just comment that these are a variety of amendments, some of them brought to our attention by the department heads, and some of them that we knew about, but we were gonna go with a later date, like to bring our revenues and expenditures in line to date if necessary, so we know where the numbers are. So if they moved in support, it all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Thank you.
Finance matters. Number one, the committee would like to remind all department heads that there is a hiring freeze, and that all hirings must be, must go before the committee for authorization to hire. Financial coordinator has recommended that any new hires that are not authorized not be paid by the payroll department until they meet with the finance department.
It's been moved in support, it all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes, and I will mention that there are four attachments, I think, we might put the attachments, but this has been done four other times since 2008, so this is another friendly reminder that we just need to watch over the numbers. Motion, we voted, right? Yeah.
Number two. The appropriation between the 269 fund and the general fund should be corrected to be $9,000, not $10,000. Motion is needed to allow the clerk and treasurer to make the appropriate budget amendments to correct the appropriations. And I would make that motion.
Support. If it moved in support, it all in favor, say aye? Or close? Motion passes.
Number three. Number three. The USB grants have been submitted for reimbursement. The one point five percent grant payment of one thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-five cents has been paid to Laura Mabel, or her, or, and I would make that motion.
Support. Has the move been supported, all papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion passes.
Number four, Christie Stammer, who will be court, has requested to attend conference. Total cost of lodging is two hundred and twenty dollars and eighteen cents, and registration of one hundred dollars. Cost to come from line one oh one, one four eight, eight six zero, 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 zero. And I would make that motion.
Has the move been supported, all papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion passes.
Number five. It is a recommendation of the financial coordinator to direct the payroll department to not pay the new hire in front of the court until there is a request for a hire made to the finance committee. And I would make that motion.
Has the move been supported, all papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion passes.
Number six. The park to recreation equipment will be placed for steel bid with the following reserves. Tractor, thirty-two hundred dollars. Box cutter, two hundred dollars. Blade, one hundred and fifty dollars. Brush hog, two hundred dollars. A due date will need to be established for the bid to be returned for consideration. So I would make that motion along with setting a date for.
Well, I'm just wondering, we've had a lot of inquiries about that. I guess we could do it the twenty-eighth, because we do have the reserves, so. We'll want to send this over. She has till eleven, is that what you wish? Okay.
But that's supposed to be, you return by twenty-seventh.
Right.
Twenty-seventh.
Right, so turn back to twenty-seventh before. And.
Oh, it's, it's, they, the motion.
So that would work. So it'd be the, one second. Paul, the next? Well, you're not here on the twenty-fourth. Well, we could have, we could turn it into the clerk's office by board, and twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth by board. And there was a motion, was there support?
Yes.
Has the move been supported, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion passes.
Where is the deal, working with you?
South of the Anis building. And I think that's a three forty international, but you might want to put the specifics of that, but give it rec, please.
Number seven. A revenue line needs to be established for rent received from the health department. Line item one oh one, zero, 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 six, six, four, zero, 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 health department rent. A motion is needed to create the line and move the current balance of rent revenue from the three sixty-nine fund to close the file. And I would make that motion.
Support. Has the move been supported, all papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion passes.
Number eight. It is a recommendation of the financial coordinator and treasurer to increase the parcel data maintenance amount from one dollar and sixty cents to two dollars and ten cents per parcel, beginning with the second quarter, two thirteen billing. This amount has not been adjusted in four years. And I would make that motion.
Support. Has the move been supported, all papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion passes.
And last, the list is, the treasurer presented a contract with Glenwood Schools to collect summer taxes. A motion is needed to allow the treasurer to collect the summer taxes for Glenwood Schools. And I would make that motion.
Support. Has the move been supported, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion passes.
And what's the other?
Well, it's kind of one of those things where I just noticed we had, we talked about the district court employee being part-time. Five hours a day. And we had to catch that some. Well, we talked about that. But if we did that, we need to reestablish the part-time, the budget that, and wanted to, we didn't know what F O C was doing, and it looks like. So we, we need to take that up for our next meeting, because we're going to have to shuffle some bunch of. The goal here is to try to do internal transfers as much as possible, and there accordingly has been some, and we hear that the friend of the court has hired, although we discouraged that to some degree until we worked some matters out with the district court. So while we're doing all these shuffling, we don't really want to hire from outside, when we have current employees that may end up laid off because of that. And I say may, because we don't necessarily know where we're at, so. I think it's best that we wait for a next finance meeting to coordinate where employees are getting shuffled right now, right?
That's probably a good idea.
Are we all in agreement there? Yeah. I don't think a week or two is going to make a break of any, but we are trying to do a turn, so, but we will wait up, wait on that.
Was he talking to you, or?
Yes.
Okay. I've got multiple notes here, so.
Jenny, before you start, you know, since you brought that, going back to that flag issue, you had it thoroughly. As that, when you can get something back, if you had that practice, I'd like to make a motion to install or fix and maintain a, like, flag in the memorial wall.
Support. It's been moved in support of, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion passes. Like, it sounds like Jenny's on it, but we'll make sure that that, that's getting through. And in finance, Terry and the financial coordinator and I were talking about these budget amendments, which we're perfectly fine with. Although we are going to wait for labor in the year. If it's needed, you know, there will be one, and it helps to figure out where our line items are currently. I recommend them those right now. There was a couple of other recommendations that we're not comfortable with right now, at this point. Two of them, to be specific, were E D C and the airport appropriations that the county makes to those organizations, so. The somewhat agreement, and I still need to make sure that the clerks are comfortable with this, was that the clerk and treasurer were going to send out notifications asking for help from the townships and the cities on those. And the county will make up the difference, so whether that will help, you know, what we contribute or not. But at this point, we've already promised for this budget cycle that we would give them those appropriations, and we feel that we're tightening to those appropriations at this point, but nevertheless, they were bored coming. They're going to send the letters out and see what they can drum up from the townships and the cities. And in addition to that, we've had an ongoing issue with M O S, Michigan Office Supply, who we're contracted with, and it's felt that there's some additional expenses there. And Laura is the most familiar with it, and I think she's frustrated the most with it, and she said that she offered her assistance with that. If this court so chooses, we could put her as the pinpoint person to either negotiate with M O S or another contract with somebody different.
That's not what I said. I said that we'd be happy to put C B I copyers, and pull C B I copyers to come back in here at the termination, as this board terminates the M O S contract and not negotiate with them.
So you just want to get rid of M O S?
The town department has up here, they have the same thing.
How many department heads out here concur? Get rid of M O S.
Laura's overreacting, I'm happy with M O S.
Yeah, we haven't had any problem with M O S, that was a joke, by the way. So. I don't think.
They all complain when.
They give us refurbished cartridges, I can put a brand-new cartridge that they send me, I get ten copies and the cartridge's done. It's just, the quality is just not fair, at all.
So we can run this through committee, or we can have Laura work on this and try to reorganize. Because the problem with running through committee, committee drags out, she knows where the issues are very specifically. The only, the only concern that I personally have is the current contract with M O S, and us getting out of that.
You guys need to work on that, because you, you guys need to go into committee and see if you can carry that contract. Allison said any kind of that contract will be terminated, so we need to go back to Allison and ask her.
Well, I don't think we need to ask, I think we need to look at, all right. Who's on data? Myself, I think.
Me.
You and, you and me? So let's jump on that, Don. We'll, we'll confirm that we can get out of that contract, and then we'll turn the reins over to Laura to renegotiate with C B I or whoever. Everybody relatively comfortable with that?
Would it not be safe to have a plan in place before you're back out of that contract, and then not have anything at all whatsoever?
We need to find out if we can get out of it first.
That's all of our checking is to see if they.
And.
How do we get our shirts in the air?
Contracts are a bummer. Contracts are a bummer. Have the handshake.
This budget amendment. And there was a couple of things under. Yeah, we need to vote on, Paul Gravelin has expressed interest in Northern Michigan Substance Abuse Services. And he's went to one meeting, so we just need to formally adopt Paul.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, all papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion passes. And we've handled control ordinances and so on into the paper, so we can factor this. That's about all I have. Finance is going to schedule a meeting with the department heads one more time, coming the twenty-third, I believe. Oh, they thought they had a few more ideas that may be beneficial to the board as we're working through our financial strains. So we wanted to sit down with them one more time, yeah. And Carmen just gave me, what is this? G D Q paperwork filed through Mr. Bob Evans, which I need to redo this before I share it, but probably what we're looking for. Unfortunately, are not looking forward to, but that's roughly all I have here. Tobacco Township last night, interesting enough that they have formally filed a lawsuit against Voice Hydro, an injunction, so that there is funding before they do any, but draw it down to the lake and so on, so. I don't, I'm not, I've not seen the lawsuit, I don't know what it specifically reads like.
It was filed.
Right, it was filed.
That's what I was.
Did it billings join yet?
Not at this point. They felt that at the very beginning stages, it's best that one township start and initiate it, and then others can follow suit shortly thereafter, so. As for.
I think you need to get ready for a long, going up there.
Yeah, we won't have any answers for a few years, I'm sure, but the lake will maintain.
That's been a thousand years before this, probably.
Yeah. Anything else from the board?
The only thing I'd like to stress, I know we've had a lot of department head meetings, and some of them helpful, some have been very informative, but I think that what we have scheduled is coming up. If anyone has any ideas, I think they need to show them, because we're going to be forced to have to do something. And I would think, my own, I guess, by our next board meeting, we're going to have to have some kind of plan for. Our recommendation for our.
Neil, you know, has been very patient with Terry and I, and, you know, he's made recommendations. He's perhaps a bit more aggressive than what Terry and I are, but maybe that's good, you know. We're trying to be the mediators and say, yeah, we absolutely have to do this, or, or whatever. Nevertheless, you know, we want to make sure that if there's any hidden monies out there, or ideas, and ideas more importantly, that we at least address those and look at them. So Neil's willing to hold off, we talked to him after our last finance meeting, until we meet with the department heads again and see where they're at, and, you know, it is working together. And that's what we're trying to do, to make sure we're doing the right thing, so. Anything else from the board? Anything from the board?
I missed part of the earlier discussion I had to run downstairs, hey, please, I just want to clarify what finance and the board's position is towards the district court and our staffing needs. It sounds like, at this point, you're not going to pay the person that left our office to go to the friend of the court's office, and are we going to be able to replace that part-time person through the probation department, or do we need to start shutting down probation?
I think we want to sit down with you again, because we didn't realize that F O C was going to hire right away. We didn't even know there was an opening. We sent them a letter Friday stating, you know, please hold off, sit down with finance, and apparently they hired as of yesterday. Or the person started as of yesterday, I don't know where the confusion is, but.
Okay, and then the other position on the deputy clerk that is gone, that apparently at this point is one you want to talk to us more about then also.
Well, I'm sorry.
We have two positions that were vacant now. We have a part-time clerk in the probation department, who's the one that does, you know, some of the typing, deals with people coming in, the P V Ts and things like that. If we're not going to be able to replace her, our probation officer is basically going to have to run the probation department, which means we're not going to be able to do a whole lot of other things besides her doing her reports. We're going to have to stop the P V Ts. There was another revenue source thing. You know, so something, again, we'd like to get an answer if we can replace as quickly as possible. The deputy clerk that's gone is the one we talked with you about, and also that, you know, Kerry has moved on. That's one that, you know, we need to replace also.
That was pretty much what we wanted to do, was sit down with the courts and get the court somehow involved with us so we can manipulate some of our employees around without any additional cost to the county and.
Well, manipulations, you'd be that we're losing staff and they're going elsewhere.
Well, that's, as we're losing those staff, we don't want to replace them from outside people, and we have internal people we're trying to keep, so. That's been the challenge. The challenge is all of us communicating with each other, when there's an opening in F O C, in a retirement, that we not replace it without the board knowing.
I just want to make sure I understand what the board's position is, so that I can, you know, explain it, the judge, and let him decide how he wants to move forward.
Our position is very clear, please get with us, we'll sit down and work it out with you in some fashion, somehow.
At this point, you're scheduling meetings again, what, next week?
I, I can meet with you this afternoon if you want, it's that important, Terry can, if you want to, you guys want to try to meet this morning yet?
Judges in court this morning, he's got prelims and stuff like that this afternoon, he's got some hearings, but maybe something later on during the day.
I think you're pretty open this week? You guys tell us.
Except for Friday.
Yeah. You tell us when you can meet, and we'll try to somehow make it happen, it shouldn't take too long, it's just working together to make it happen. Anything else? Yes?
I'm going to have to come up here because I'm partially deaf and I can't hear nothing. I don't know what I'm even doing here, I'll tell you the truth, it's just like a hen sitting on eggs. I haven't heard a thing in the whole evening. But I have a thought. Back about three years ago, the road commission thought they would solve the problem when there was water running down Wyman Road. They figured they would go ahead and dig a trench on Burling Drive and put a drain across Burling Drive. And when it rains, right now I've got two and a half foot of water in my backyard, and I, I haven't had any, any, not, just haven't seen any ground there since the spring, because I've had nothing but water back there. And I pay taxes for, for that, to be able to cut grass and stuff like that, and I can't do it. that to be able to, uh, cut grass and stuff like that and I can't do it. Uh, what happens, what the county did, they went ahead and dug, dug the drain across Burling Drive and raised the, raised the pipe up. When it rains, uh, they did leave that water from Wyman Road. They, they don't have that, they drain from a bunch of water gathering on Wyman Road because they, they had it going down one side of Burling Drive, across an open field, down on Creek Road, that's where I live on, uh, on Lutskian Creek, down on Creek Road. And it, uh, it fills in all, uh, all the land across there. Matter of fact, there's a lady there, her husband died there, well, five months ago, Johnson is his name. Uh, he, uh, went and hadn't seen his attorney here and tried to sue the guy that cut off the drain. Let's see, what, that one time they were the culvers, put in, uh, his, his property and when it rained, the water would go down that culvert and across into the, into the river. He filled it in. So where's the water got to go? Well, the township went ahead and put a sewer in, not asking some of the people about putting sewer down a private road, they just went ahead and did it. I understand by the attorney that the judge okayed it for those people to put the sewer in. And the three, the three drains that the township put in don't work. There's no water going down them drains. And, uh, so all the water backs up. Now, I told the supervisor, I said to him, I says, say why don't you do something about this? I paying forty dollars a month for a drain that isn't working. Well, now for the last six months, I haven't paid a damn thing and I told him, I'm not paying you a penny until you get them drains open so the water will go down there. Now, I think I'm behind eight hundred dollars to the township for the drains that they charge forty dollars a month to have that. Well, those are all plugged up, so why in hell should I go ahead and pay forty dollars for a drain that isn't working? And I, I'm, I'm appealing to you people here. If you can do something about getting them drains open so the water can have access to the river. Well, this one guy filled in this, this thing, it was a drain, the water went down there. I never had no problems with water until he filled it in. I told the township supervisor, hey, he can't fill that drain in, that's against the law. And he just shrugged his shoulders, well, it's private property. shrugged his shoulders and went down the way. Now, I'm just appealing to you people, if you people can do something about opening up those drains. I talked to the road commission, they'll come out with a pencil and paper and mark this and mark that, mark that and jump in a truck and gone, you don't see them again for another year. Uh, they're not doing that.
Right.
Hey, John?
Yes.
I'm very, very familiar with the problems you have. I say I am very familiar with the problem that you have.
Yeah.
I do know that the clerk and the deputy clerk was up there last week with, with the water situation.
They were?
Yeah, they, they were and they looked at your neighbors, th- this board doesn't know the layout like I do because we live there. But I will give it to you after the meeting, what you're gonna have to do is get to the road commission and I.
I'll forget it?
No, I'm not gonna forget it and I will have them out there. I, I can't promise what they'll do, but I will set up, date up with Mark. Have them out there and he will get with you so that they can see the problem. I know where the problem lies. Uh, and I know he, he's not exaggerating about the two feet of water in his home yard. But it's something this board I don't think can help you with.
Oh, they can.
But, but I can help you and will help you with the road commission. I can't tell you what they're going to do, but I will guarantee.
Well, they, they always come out, but that's private road and there's nothing we can do.
Yeah, well, there's always an, an answer. I'll give you after this meeting and the road commissioner, meaning his next Wednesday, week from tomorrow. But I'll give with that confession, I'll try to get a hold of Mark from away at home from the day, but I'll guarantee, I'll have somebody out there to work with.
I hope you do, but the, the only, only person that'll be mad about that being flooded over is the ducks that swim out there.
It, it's bad and it's, it's, it's gonna be a nasty situation, but I know where, this has been a problem for, for four years.
See, I, I can't use that property because it's all underwater.
I know.
So how can I use, use that water?
I will give you a meeting.
Okay, I wish to, I wish somebody, I've been three years gone and I'm ninety, ninety-two years old and I'm about ready to hit the pro gate, I want it closed before the, before something happens.
If I have the damn shovel, I'll come out there and fix it before that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public candidates? Again, I just, I need to read through this. But, um, I just wanna reiterate, you know, Terry and I are really working hard, trying to make sure that we're gotten all our i's and cross and t's and we wanna work with the courts. I understand, you know, shuffling people around is stressful, but at this point in the game, I think that's our only alternative. We're doing the best we can. We're open-minded, any suggestions anybody has and we encourage you to come forward with them. Anything else? Okay.
Support?
The movement has been supported on paper, say aye? Opposed? Motion passes? I'll support that, my sir. All in favor?